I'd like to call to order the evening meeting of our May 2 county commissioners meeting and welcome on everyone who's here in person and those who are watching at home or wherever on YouTube. First item on the agenda today is to approve or to discuss the agenda. I hear a motion to approve the agenda.
Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as stated.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any other discussion? If not, in all that favor approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have a visit from our 2022 Ms. Johnston County and Ms. Johnston County Outstanding Teen. So, I think we have Emily Ann Marsh and let's see who it's.
Hayden.
Hayden Pearson. Yeah, I had to find my words here, so if you would come up and address. Thank you guys for coming.
Well, good evening, everyone. How are you guys doing today?
Good.
Good. Well, my name is Emily Ann Marsh and I'm Ms. Johnston County 2022. And tonight, I was going to talk about my platform about human trafficking and sensationalism, but then I found out I only have three minutes, so I can't quite do that. So, I'm going to give you like a SparkNote version of myself. I have lived in Johnston County since I was two years old, so I am a JoCo girl. I graduated from UNC School of the Arts with a filmmaking degree and my specialty in particular is immersive entertainment and picture and sound editing. Right now, I am a filmmaker and I don't know if you guys have seen the latest movie Spider-Man, but I am in that and I do quite a lot of other movies as well. My platform is the Blue Hearts Club and to raise awareness about human trafficking and I created a piece in the virtual reality headset, so if you're interested in that, come see me after, we could talk more about that. And I also work for a company where we created a few other pieces in the headset as well. So, I'm going to introduce my teen, Ms. Hayden.
Hi, I'm Hayden, Ms. Johnston County's Outstanding Teen. I'm a sophomore at South Johnston High School and I am a resident of Johnston County and I've been here for about a year and a half now. I absolutely love it. I'm 16 years old and recently, I was crowned Ms. Johnston County's Outstanding Teen. And in June, I will be competing for the title of Ms. North Carolina's Outstanding Teen in High Point, which is super excited and it is my second year going and I'm so excited to go. A little bit about my social impact initiative, it's called #LifeUnfiltered, where I raise awareness for the negative effects social media can have on our mental health through self-comparison. At the age of 13, I started having negative thoughts about myself after seeing influencers on social media and it got so bad to the point where every day, I would have negative thoughts about myself and the way I looked and eventually, I thought enough is enough and I wanted to change that. So, through my social impact initiative, I've been able to go to schools all across Johnston County and spread the word of my social impact and basically put out the signs of negative mental health through self-comparison and signs of what to avoid when on social media if you were having these thoughts and I've been able to decrease the rates of negative mental health thoughts, which is fantastic for me and my hope is that eventually, I can spread the word all across schools in North Carolina. Thank you.
Outstanding. Any comments or questions from the board?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Outstanding.
They want a picture.
Yeah, I was gonna say, could we get a picture from, from our PO? Okay, good. You can come up here. Come up here in front of us, yeah.
Make us look good.
Are we gonna squeeze in?
Yeah.
Dick, you come around this way. You want to be in the picture? Come over this way.
Okay.
Yeah, you can stand up too if you want to take pictures. Is that what I'm saying?
One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you.
Oh, we got, wait a minute. Wait a minute, we got some, we got some more taking pictures over here. The people you came with want to take pictures, so let's get those first, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's keep my hand.
Yeah. And not on the agenda, but I did want to recognize one individual who is here tonight, that is Dr. Ken Boham, who is our acting, our interim president at Johnston Community College. And Dr. Boham, if you want to come up and tell us a little bit about you, now I guess this is your introduction to Johnston County.
Sure. Thank you for making me follow that. I mean, 67-year-old man has got to come up. Nobody's gonna want to take a picture of me in front of you all. But anyway, Ms. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to meet with you tonight and speak with you and sort of introduce myself. I'm Ken Boham and I'm going to be, I'm slated to be, the very proud interim president at Johnston Community College. And you said acting, I came to the conclusion that all presidents are acting. I mean, so interim and acting, we're sort of all doing the same. I am married to my original wife and we have two children. In fact, my daughter will graduate next weekend with her MBA from UNC Charlotte. I'm very proud of her and my son. And I have a 15-month-old grandson who I'm very, very proud of. His name is Emmett. And so, he and my place at the beach and my wife take up the time that I'm not playing golf in my retirement. So, decided to come out of retirement and work with Johnston Community College. I was a real president for 21 years at Caldwell Community College and Technical Institute in Lenore, North Carolina. And this will actually be my fifth interim since I retired, so I don't really resemble retirement that much. But the time that I have been retired, I have enjoyed it and I hope to get back to that. So, this is not going to be a permanent gig, I don't think. And so, I hope to be able to get back to retirement, but I'm excited about being here. I worked at Wake Tech for 11 years and so, I've been close by. I grew up in Northampton County, so I'm from North Carolina. And I will tell you, the whole time I was at Caldwell, we ranked 15th out of 58 institutions. And Johnston Community College was 14th. And I chased Don Reichert and Johnston Community College for years because I always wanted to get by Johnston Community College and Don Reichert, having no idea that I could be here. So, now, I can run Johnston in the grind and move Caldwell up and finally, I can make that happen. But now, that's, that's not going to be my goal. And also, I am told that the Lord loves a cheerful giver and it's my understanding that not only have you cheerfully, but you have graciously supported Johnston Community College. And I sure hope that continues with the time that I'm here. And I look forward to working with you and I look forward to working with the folks at Johnston Community College. I sure look forward to providing excellent service and educational opportunities to the citizens of Johnston County, not only the public, but to the corporate and to all citizens of Johnston County. That's what we're here for.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Welcome.
Ms. Chairman, I do. I've spent some time with Ken this evening and I think Johnston Community College is most fortunate to have him here. He's one of us.
Thank you. Was that southern enough?
All right. Welcome, sir. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much.
And thank you. Next up is public comments. Before I read all this, is there anyone here to make any public comments? And I don't think there's anybody in the hall. If not, can we just skip over this section then? I'm looking for a nod over there, so yeah. So, all right, we'll move to the next item, which is public hearing rezoning and conditional use permits. First up is case 2206. I will open the rezoning hearing and ask Mr. Brastin Newton, our planning director, to come forward and give us the case background.
Thank you and good evening to Ms. Chairman and Commissioners. Our first case is 22-06. And if I could, I do not, I do not see the applicant here this evening or nor have we been informed that his representative for the applicant is here. So, that may be somewhat problematic and a lot of that, historically, this body has chosen to table this until your next regular meeting, first regular meeting of the month. So, unless there's applicant or his representative has come forward, I would suggest we make that or we move in that.
I don't see any reason to deviate from what we've historically done, so I hear a motion to.
But so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to table rezoning hearing, case 2206, to our first meeting in June.
June.
In the evening session. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have conditional zoning district hearing, case 2210. I will open that hearing and ask Mr. Newton to give us the case background on that one.
Thank you. Case 22-10 is petition to rezone 2.5 acres of a 13.32 acre tract located at 2006 County Line Road, Pleasant Grove Township from agriculture residential to our general business conditional zoning. The owner and applicant are Steve and Carrie Finch. The conditional zoning request involves a particular use being parking and maintenance of business vehicles. Property is served by utility or services are served by West Johnston Fire District 5210 Rescue. Existing and surrounding land uses, the property is currently zoned agriculture and residential. Surrounding land uses and zoning are agriculture and residential uses, zone agriculture and residential, general business, special use district, and this is just to the south of property, south and east of the property, and this is a plant nursery. Traffic along County Line Road, count it 900 vehicles per day. This is a 2020 count. This portion of County Line Road does not appear on our transportation plan, is needing The land use plan designates this area as a secondary growth area in which, in which low to moderate levels of growth pressures are anticipated over the next 20 years. Staff is, staff recommendation is denied due to the inconsistency with land use plan and the, a subsequent violation. So, this actually, although there is no history of violation, as it states, there is, there was a violation that was, that was, there was a complaint, the violation was noted, which precipitated, precipitated this request. Big glad to answer your question.
Any questions for Mr. Newton?
So, it came in as a non-conforming.
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions, Mr. Newton? All right, hearing none, I will ask the applicant to come forward and present their case and also discuss the proposed conditions. If you would state your name and general location name.
My name's Steve Finch. My wife Carrie Finch. We reside at 2006 County Line Road, Andrew, North Carolina.
Maybe you want to tell us a little bit about your project?
I have been, been parking my trucks and trailers since 2015. I've actually lived there since 2014. There was a complaint lodged, was unaware who it may be, but anyway, so we've come to try to be compliant with the laws and regulations of this, so I can continue parking my trucks and trailers and going forth with my business that I've been running here for now, eight years now, at this location.
All right. Any, any questions of the applicant?
I do, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You're not talking about building anything additional, are you? You're just talking about parking vehicles?
No, sir. Everything is as it is right now, yeah.
The parking lot itself wouldn't change as far as impervious surface?
No, it is. What you see on the map there.
Right.
Is what it is now and I've got maps. I don't know if you have copy of the.
Which we did.
Yes, yes, sir. That's it.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, I did want to make, could you go back to the map? You put the map, not, not.
The GIS.
The GIS map, yeah. So, I just want to make sure because the one, the one outline in blue, is that the one we're considering here?
That's my home site.
But we're going to the.
It's next door. It's the.
To the right of that?
Yeah.
Okay, that part right there. So, that's actually the parcel we're considering?
Yes.
I think you said it didn't have an address.
So, we try to get an address for this actual site, for the shop, so in case any emergencies happen, at least, you know, emergency vehicles will respond to that location and not the house location.
Okay.
There have been, the planning board asked for some conditions and we, we are fine with all the kitchen conditions that they were asking for. I don't know if you have that sheet?
We do.
Okay. With the fences and all, they're already in place, some, and there's some other plantings that I want to put in front of everything from the roadside, which would be, I don't know if I can, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. That, that area there, wax myrtles, which I have had on my agenda before this happened, to be planted there to help, you know, to buffer anything parked against that fence.
Ben, could you show that map, the wax? Actually, yeah. Dana, are you running that? Yeah, there we go. Okay, the site plan, okay.
Yeah, you see where the trailers are parked, there's a fence there, we got the cross and the line that represents a wire fence and it would be on the left side towards the roadside that I would be planting, which wasn't, the planning board didn't require anything, it's just something that I want to do to try to beautify any, any further along with the, the crepe myrtles going down the right-hand side of the property that are joining my neighbor. And, and there were some other trees that were probably planted every hundred foot that would be put also as a beautification and a buffer.
So, do you understand that that's above and beyond any requirement that, that we have?
Yeah, yeah, well, so far, I mean, I don't know what you're going to require further, but anyway.
At least what the ordinance.
Yes, yes, yeah, it was, the requirements that we read were understood and more than happy to do that. I mean, I understand the difference between residential and, you know, having a commercial property or whatever part there.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry. If I'm reading this right, it says that the parcel is adjacent to a property that's already general business, special use is landscaping, nursery, and that's where y'all live? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. It's to the right, to the right of that, to the bottom of that plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that's.
I guess it's a nursery.
Mm-hmm.
Once he was landscaping and stuff like that, but I think it's just nursery.
It's more of a nursery now, but that's already, if I'm reading this correctly. Existing. Existing.
Yes, it's pre-existing, yes, ma'am.
Got it. It was already approved, I should say. Yes.
So, you live next door to this?
Mm-hmm.
And the property, and you're just parking your trucks on the lot next door?
Yes.
And how long you been doing that?
Since we moved there. 2015.
2015, so it is.
So, you're just trying to come into compliance?
Yes.
Okay, I understand.
There was a complaint filed, one complaint, and so, we're trying to get things right.
Mr. Finch, how many vehicles are we talking about? Reading the, leading the planning board minutes, it says you're selling and you operate together and use one tractor-trailer and one dump truck?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was confused with, with the drawing, previous drawing where he showed additional vehicles, like.
Well, the drawing is exactly the vehicles I have, the trailers that go to the tractor-truck.
Oh, okay. How many trailers do you have?
But I'm not hiring anybody else to do this business. I've been there, done that, and it's just me and my son. And the only truck that's used at the time is one, you know, tractor-truck or dump truck. I have a.
Nine.
A service, a service truck that pulls a machine with a little small tag-along trailer. My son pulls that and I usually drive the dump truck or the tractor-trailer to pull the bigger equipment. But the equipment, I don't park it up here. I park it further down or it's on the job. Most time, it's out on the job. But, but any, anything up here, we're seen by any passing person or my neighbors, they, they see the trucks that are parked now as I've got drawn on the plan.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Help me understand, one of the conditions being that there would be no more than 15 commercial vehicles to include trailers parked on site?
Yeah. Go ahead.
That was a recommendation from the planning board to expand that to that number to ensure that we were in compliance.
That's to cover trailers and all, not just vehicles.
So, you have nine trailers. How many trucks and other pieces of equipment do you have there currently?
Three, four, six. I've got roughly six trailers, you know, pull behind the truck trailers and four trucks is all I have.
So, right now, you're at 10-ish?
Yeah. And they just come up with 15 in case, you know, any future.
Or if anybody saw and they got trailers there and we're counting them, that we wouldn't be brought in for another complaint?
Yeah, that, that file, yeah. They would get a call and they say, well, he's in compliance, you know, so that's to cover anything over and above that.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. And is there any, anyone else here to speak for or against? All right, if you would, come forward and state your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Stuart Williams.
And I'm Daniel Williams. We own the nursery beside Mr. Finch. So, are we, are you good?
Yeah, yeah.
I can't say you're good. I've got, I've got some high issues, but anyway, the only thing that we're looking for in compliance is, is our house is beside the entranceway to his facility. We have no problems with the trucks or trailers, that's not an issue. But we did come several years ago, seven, eight years ago, for our rezoning for general business as well. And all that we ask is, is that the business line up with the parcel that we have rezoned so that when we look out our kitchen window or where we're going to put our pool in, that we don't see trucks and trailers. So, we have ours rezoned general business as well.
Is that this piece right here?
If you, if, if you look at the map there, this, that parcel there is where his home is. That's correct. And then, in the back, right, that's where the barn is, right? And my piece is the, the one on the far right where that big open field is, that's my parcel there.
Okay.
And what Daniel's issue is, is that that aerial photograph isn't exactly to scale.
Right.
Okay? And there's, there's more material down towards Johnston County Road than there is shown in that particular aerial photograph. So, it's like right across from his kitchen and.
So, have you had a chance to look at the site plan that they proposed?
We never were notified. We were never notified. In fact, the tax ID number that was in, in the notification was 13 Charlie 05004 Apple. And this piece of property is actually 13 Charlie 05004 Mary. It's a different parcel than was in identification, so we didn't know what he was rezoning until we read.
The rezoning.
The rezoning thing, right.
The plaque out in front of his house.
Right.
So, that's why, what made us come today.
The plaque was never on the piece of property that was being rezoned.
Okay, so it's the same thing we're looking at here? We got the outline on the blues on the, that was on the wrong parcel?
It's on the wrong piece. Yes, sir. That's correct.
Is there, did you have one of these that they could, because it looks like there's a lot of great myrtles up there in the front? They have several.
And we screened it several years ago with green giants to put a buffer in, but you can still see from where our kitchen sink is and our bedroom is trucks. And that's all we're asking is that maybe 30, 40 feet push it back off of Johnston County Road. So, we don't see it from where we live. We own the business, I understand that, but I want to differentiate my house from my business as well.
Yeah, and I don't see a dimension on the drawing, but I see the fence is further off the road. I don't know if it's far enough off the road.
It's, it's right there with the kitchen window sink and my house is located.
And didn't you see the crepe?
Yes, right. It's alone here, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, and then they go back, at least past your kitchen window?
Yeah, so like I said, we had ours rezoned probably eight years ago for general business when we had the landscaping and now it's just a nursery there. And all I'm asking is, is that where our dimensions are of the two and a half acres that we have for general business, that his match up to ours as far as where the trucks and trailers start to be parked at, not closer to Johnston County Road because I can see it out of my house, but further back to where ours was rezoned as well.
I don't know what the exact dimensions are based on this. I mean, there's a 70, there's a 72-foot dimension, which I believe is from County Line Road and I think Daniel's indicating that that would be maybe 130, 140 feet instead, which would push the trailers back.
We don't have no complaints with the trucks or trailers. There was no complaints about that, but like I said, when we saw the rezoning, that's what drove us here to find out what exactly was going on.
And so, and I'm going to make sure, what I think, could you go back to the jazz view?
There is.
So, your property goes, you wanted additional buffer from the road, County Line Road, back to the furthest part of your parcel, if I, if I'm trying to.
Well, back beyond the home, sir.
Okay, so just back beyond the home?
Yeah. Keep the equipment back past our house, so we don't see it from our house, is all I'm asking.
Okay, okay. I don't know what that dimension is either.
And we screened it with, with green giants or privacy trees several years ago to just try to make a buffer, but we can still see it from, from our house, from when we're inside the house.
So, this site plan shows it 78 feet off the road, off County Line Road, before, off the right of way, before the fence ever starts, and then the landscaping is in that 78-foot buffer. Is that?
That's what I said, I just don't know what the dimension is to the back of their house.
Yes, sir. I don't know what it is either.
We don't know either. We didn't, we never had this until we got here.
Didn't get this map or anything until we came tonight.
Okay. And any other questions? I want to see if, I'll maybe ask if Mr. Newton can offer a solution and then we can see if the applicants are willing to put in some additional crepe myrtles.
Like I said, we have no complaints about the business. That's not a problem. We just don't want to see it from the house.
Just move it back past the kitchen.
So, we'll, we'll see, yeah, we'll, we'll use that as part of the conditional use, is look at a condition for some additional vegetation. We'll make sure to somehow figure it out and get it correct on how far back it goes.
Thank you, sir.
I'm confused, Ms. Chairman. The, the property that's outlined in the purple there, is that correct or is it, is it the one on the right or the left of that?
It's the property to the south.
Yeah. It's the one in between, yeah.
Okay. All right, I got it.
But it's, I was going to ask, that one's already rezoned. That's their current property that's already rezoned special, so.
That's right. Any, anybody else here to speak? All right, can we, and Brastin, do you want to help us make an attempt at a condition to, to make this work? Because I mean, judging from the applicant's nod at their head, I think they're willing to, to make that change, but we want to make sure we get it right.
So, the applicant has requested a two, two, two and a half acre tract to be rezoned, which would essentially be a partial rezoning of the 13.32. You could add the condition that, that by meets and bounds, through provision of a meets and bounds survey of the two and a half acres, that the front edge of that two and a half acre zoning parcel would begin at, and this is where the applicant and, and the adjacent property owner wouldn't maybe have to agree, would either begin at the rear of the home or at the rear of the property of the adjacent, adjacent resident. As you can see, the property there is somewhat mis, it's malformed. It's not a uniform shape and that, they do have a rear yard there for, that may be the, that may be the line of demarcation is the rear property line for the adjacent property.
And I, and I guess I'm going to ask applicant, what is the spacing on those crepe myrtles as you drew them? So, one every 20 feet?
So, so we have, and it's listed as item number or condition number five, the applicant must submit a detailed site plan. That site plan is a commercial site plan that's in accord, in accordance with county, county ordinance, so that'll be reviewed at a later date via TRC and staff. So that'll be reviewed at a later date via TRC and staff. So there, there are standards for street yard landscaping and the adjacent or buffer landscaping around the property as all parcels surrounding the property are agriculture residential with the exception of one parcel with the landscape or the nursery, container nursery located. So they will have to have a class.
Do we know?
Have to be a Class B buffer.
Braxton.
Along the adjacent parcel.
Why, why wouldn't it work on that condition five? It says applicant shall submit a detailed site plan for review and approval by the planning and zoning department staff that provides that the parking would not be visible from the adjoining house.
It's acceptable to all parties involved.
Seems like to me that would solve the problem. That, that would give you, I mean, for us to try to just draw this out tonight, that would give you a chance to be a hero.
And, and that's, that's, that's fine with staff.
And, and find, find a solution to this problem.
That's absolutely fine with staff. One, one concern I would have there is the, the movement of said vehicles. So if they're bringing the vehicles into the parcel and they're wanting to back those into position, obviously there will be, if it's at nighttime, there will be lights. We want to ensure that.
Okay, the Lord willing, we'll be here a month from now. So if you can't get it figured out, come back to us.
Certainly.
You know, I'm wondering because they said they planted a buffer. They're in the landscape business and that buffer's insufficient. Can they tell us if the Craig Myrtles are going to help that out or are they got that, is that going to be insufficient continually? Because how many, how much do we need to plant there? Maybe we need to look at what's planted instead of Craig Myrtles.
Where our Class B buffer will be required along all property lines that are, that are, where they are joining.
That could be petunias, something that would be more, more shielding.
Well, it actually will be, so our buffer is one large tree, two small trees, and six shrubs for every 100 linear feet.
Is that going to stop them where we can't see from his kitchen window?
Most likely, most likely not until such time they're at a mature height.
Yeah, it'd be some, some years.
It's not an immediate solution though. But it, but they run to nursery business, so they should be able to help with some here. But they, they planted something there and it didn't work, then what else? I don't want to just throw something at it.
It seems, it seems like to me the applicant's willing to do anything that's.
Yeah, yes. It seemed to be the order to be able to get together and figure it out.
I just think we need to tell the applicant what needs to be done to meet these folks' needs and let them continue to have the business they have.
It, it, it sounds, it's too easy and I don't know, we're just, we're beating this thing to death that obviously planting it so they can't see it at the back of their house and then I don't know how we.
Sounds like Class B buffer would accomplish that.
And you could leave it in the staff's hands with regard to the location of the, location of zoning parcels and, and the buffer requirement.
So you can vary that buffer requirement.
All right, Mr. Chairman, you ready for a motion?
Well, I just wanted to make sure, are we modifying that condition or are we going to leave it for a Class B buffer and then that the Finces will accept it? Yes, sir.
The buffer, I'm not worried about. Neither one of us needs to spend money on a buffer with a claim. I think there's misunderstanding what we're asking. All we're asking is, is that when we had our property rezoned for general business, we had the two and a half acres rezoned as well. He's wanting two and a half acres rezoned for general business as well, which is perfect. All I'm asking is that where our, his road comes in and where his trucks and trailers are parked, that he moves them 30 feet or 40 feet further off of Johnston County Road and then we don't see nothing. Then no more vegetation has to be planted from either party. We don't see it. And that's a simple solution as far as nobody having to do any more buffer. The Craig Myrtles are simply, they're insufficient.
There's a fence back there. Move that fence back.
So you're just saying move the fence, move, move the fence back?
On this point.
Make sure I show you the situation.
Do you mind coming up and saying all that so we can?
Yeah.
So, and I think, I think what the gentleman's saying is they just essentially want to move the zoning parcel back. So the zoning parcel and, and the actual, the real property is, is, are different.
Or that they match up with the rezoning.
Yeah, so they could, you could just move the zoning parcel, the zoning boundary back off of County Line Road.
Yeah.
And, and I think there's actually a, there's a line of demarcation there too where the end of that, there's a fence, seeing that, yeah, you're almost on it, but if you moved up a little bit for, see where that L-shaped part is there? Right where that, there's a tree and then this, then, then the, then the property comes like this.
Where this, where this is going.
Mr. Finch, I hate to tell you this, but can you?
Right there?
Yes, sir.
Y'all are using that as landscape.
Well, we're, we're just asking.
Nursery. Y'all are, y'all are using that as nursery all the way from.
Mr. Finch, I hate to ask you to do this, but you come stand near the microphone so.
Yes, sir. I'm pointing, I'm pointing out where the chain link fence is.
But we need to, we need to have him on so we can hear him.
The chain link fence is right here. Right there at my paper. It goes across.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's what they want mine to be.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Absolutely correct.
And no, no additional plannings or buffer or any other shit needs to be done. They just want me to park my trailers, which are about right here up at my fence. They want me to park about 30 more feet.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Are you willing to do that?
That's what he's asking.
Are you willing to do that?
Sure. Then it says everybody's having to do this for.
It's too easy.
Yeah, do it. So we're not split zoning the property, are we? All right, we just put that setback on there.
It's the parking setback.
And put the condition, make that as a condition.
So the property will have to be, property will have to be subdivided.
The property will have to be subdivided to do, to do what we're talking about.
Complete its own zoning parcel, yes, sir.
And is that something y'all want to do? And does this accomplish what they were trying to accomplish by becoming in compliance? I understand what they're saying on great, that they were able to work that out. Obviously that seems like an easy enough fix, but I think the main issue reason why they were here is because it was a complaint that it was not in compliance with what our ordinance laws are.
So the, the use of, the use of the property is what's not in compliance. And with the rezoning, it would come into compliance. What we're talking about are the design features and the boundary for the zoning parcel. Even with, even with duly zoned parcels, you can, they each are, they're independent zoning parcel, not to be, not to be confused with a tax parcel. So that zoning parcel, you could have, essentially you could have a split zoning on the property. And it could be multiple. And we have, we have had those in the past. What we've operated on over the last, say, year and a half is trying to eliminate these zone, duly zoned parcels. And when there is, when there is a rezoning of a parcel that is only partial, we have been requiring it be, to be subdivided to create its own independent tax.
Why can't you just solve this with a condition, Braxton?
We certainly can.
I, I just.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I just.
Let's do it and move it.
With a setback, a setback of.
Just rezon the whole parcel and, and put a condition on it.
Mr. Chairman, and the, that.
He's making an attempt.
Yeah, I'll make an attempt. I, I make a motion that we approve this zoning. We adopt all the conditions that the planning board adopted. We modify condition five to say that the applicant shall submit a detailed site plan for review and approval by the planning and zoning staff department that ensures that all vehicles are parked enough off of.
County Line.
County Line Road that it does not interfere with the neighbor's vision out of their house.
All right, before you go to the motion, I just wanted to make sure two things. One, you're okay with that condition? And then I need to close the public hearing at some point. So is that a condition?
Or is the setback being?
To that, that fence line you just described? And you'll bring the, the site plan back to, to show where that is?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think.
I'll suck at that, didn't it?
Well, let me, I'm going to close the public hearing and we got a motion.
You close the public and just ditto what I said.
Yes, all right. And then we have a second. So, whoo, let me see if that was what I got going here.
Get a little march forward.
Yeah.
All right, so we've got the applicant agreeing to the final conditions. We've closed the hearing. We've had a, actually, we had to make the formal motion to adopt the statement of consistency with that adjustment. So Mr. Smith, I'll ask you if you'll look there, the motion needed with your.
All right.
We're going to get this right before we get out of here.
All right, to adopt the statement of consistency resolution is presented in the agenda pack and approve the rezoning request with the conditions that we've just discussed. And that, that would be my motion.
That would be my shot.
All right.
There you go.
We're getting somewhere. So we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We need, we need a break here. All right. Thank, thank you both, the applicant and we're taking, helping us work through that. So next up, we have two items that we are familiar with. We've heard four of these before. So we have two on some NC Great Grant broadband applications. First up, we have AT&amp;T. And Robert, I'm not going to try to pronounce your last name because I'm not going to get it right.
Thank you very much. Robert DeRoe with AT&amp;T. Glad to be here tonight. Thank you for your time tonight. I've had the pleasure to work with this board before on some cell tower issues. So we, a few years ago, brought more cell tower coverage to Johnston County. I'm born and raised in Wayne County, lived my whole life in Wayne, Johnston, or rural Wake County. I don't have broadband at my house in rural Wake County right now myself. So I, I'm here to ask for your support in our Great Grant application. You guys, as you said, you have heard these before, so I'm not going to go into details about what the Great Grant application is, but I do have a short, a very brief presentation about AT&amp;T. As you see, it's just showing the fiber architecture that we'll be bringing to the citizens of Johnston County. Comes in completely fiber, shows all the equipment that we'll be placing in the neighborhoods. Our residential service is up to 5 gigabits per second. That is asymmetrical, 5 gigs up and 5 gigs down. Any questions about this one? Okay, next, just tells a little bit about AT&amp;T, our 100% fiber network, meet current and future needs. We're building for future. And as we build to these census tracts, we will be building into areas that are not in the eligible census tracts on our own as we pass those living units. Just a little bit about AT&amp;T. Okay, so now we're talking about the presentation of the Great Grant application itself. We have identified eligible census tracts in Johnston County, looking at the northern portion of Johnston County. AT&amp;T doesn't have a huge footprint in Johnston County. We don't serve a lot of the county. What we serve is in Selma area and up in the Zebulon area. And that's where we've identified our need that we can serve with our footprint. So we are going to serve 1,497 eligible addresses. The Great Grant total is going to be $4 million. And should we win that Great Grant, we're just asking the county for a partnership of $200,000. AT&amp;T's portion is going to be about $1 million. So we're going to put in a million, asking the county, state for 400, 4 million and then asking for you guys just $200,000. Short, brief, to the point. You guys have heard these before. Any questions for me?
Any questions?
No, sure.
All right, well, thank you, Robert. We appreciate that.
Thank you for the brief but effective presentation.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a similar presentation from Cloudwise. And I think we have Sean Olson, is it Sean or Chris coming up?
Chris is coming up.
All right, Chris.
A similarly challenging last name.
Yes, I, I stopped at Chris.
Chris Utesh. Thank you for having us come present. Do appreciate the opportunity. This is a great funding opportunity for the, the state as well as Johnston County. We have a quick presentation as well. Just wanted to give a quick overview, introduction of us, since we have not worked with you all before, kind of talk about kind of how our, we've been growing and then what we have proposed for Johnston County. So Cloudwise started as a managed services provider, which is a bolt-on business IT department in Wilmington, North Carolina. In 2015, the state found out about our internet service we were offering in the, the community and said, hey, we were using a technology called fixed wireless, which was taking fiber connectivity and beaming that from building to building. They said, well, that's an interesting concept, but that worked in rural. In fact, it began a whole long journey, which then started in 2018 and were culminated in 2018 with the public fiber partnership, one of the first in the state for broadband with Nash County. So we've been deploying, and we'll go into that later, but deploying there and growing kind of in this rural journey ever since 2018, which of course was for us was Hurricane Florence, which is, we'll always remember that one and that specific date there. But it's really become, if you go to the next slide, really become our mission and our vision to get the internet to empowering all communities. So we see that as kind of start the train tracks and then come on with, teach people how to use it later on. So lots of areas that still don't have good quality internet today and so they can't take advantage of the, you know, streaming and gaming and, and working from home opportunities that are so prevalent in our society today. Here's a little bit of our history and kind of how we've grown. Again, trying to stay fast here. Any questions so far? All right, go to the next slide here. Quick little run through of us, it's a mix of kind of upstart IT people as well as telecom veterans. Go to the next slide. This is kind of an overview, so this is kind of the meat of it. It's kind of talking about our public fiber partnership there with Nash County as well as the, the journey we're going on with your neighbors to the south of Hartnett County, kind of surrounding Raleigh. A lot of rural areas need good quality internet out there. So we started with both of these with the fixed wireless deployments. It's a little faster, we can get to the low end speeds, kind of that fiber quickness without the multi-gig speeds, but if we done a fraction of the cost and typically faster than deploying fiber down the road. Of course, this grant we're proposing today is full fiber on the premise. We're partnering with an existing fiber provider on the middle mile, so we'll just be building directly to the homes in these pockets we've identified. And the idea on that is keeps the cost low to the end user. And so ultimately, if we were to partnership, we want to grow that with the community as we've done in Nash and Hartnett, to find other opportunities for you guys trying to build new schools, attract new industry, et cetera, to find how we can use that to help the internet both attract businesses, but then also help the citizens and the students in your community today. A quick slide on this, a lot of text. Any, any quick questions?
Am I understanding correctly that this, it's fiber, but you guys also have an element that's wireless?
We do have, we do have.
Okay.
So if we kind of look at a full county build, which is again the whole goal, we don't want to hide pockets here and there, just with the technology and the rurality of the North Carolina, there are some elements where you want to kind of the end of that road, if you will, connect it to fixed wireless and then beam a signal for four, five, six miles beyond in those pockets. Think if somebody owns a bunch of farmland, but they got a house in the middle of it, does running fiber all the way to the house make sense or would a connection make a little more sense? But think about that kind of a grander, a grander scale, countywide. And then ultimately, potentially even fiber everywhere as, as technology allows. This is kind of a quick synopsis. This presentation was pulled together before the grant was finalized, but it is for 14.3 eligible households, to be 55 miles, new fiber build. Our project is 4.77 million. We had proposed, because of the way the Great Grant matching scores was to split that equally fifty-fifty, but if there's other metrics, I know AT&amp;T came in a little, little cheaper than us, that's, that's worth discussion as well. Basically, the important thing is to get the, we're asking today for the letter of support and the partnership which you provided to others, but again, this helps us to say if the project, our project is chosen by the Bio, then we will all work together to put directly to the point what that, that contribution's gonna be, what the roles of some political parties will be, et cetera.
Explain the key, color key here, is the pink where the area you're talking about serving?
Yes, correct, and actually, it's not all of those, those are all the eligible areas that are eligible. We're gonna be hitting just north of Marion there, the northwest, kind of right along ninety-five, as well as the south end of the greater Benson area.
Okay.
So the gray areas were awarded with your Ardoft auction, so your, other people might have come in, kind of tied those in, those are ineligible for us to go after, so we're tied just to the, kind of the reddish-pinkish areas there.
Okay.
So it's kind of, again, we're also working with our middle mile partner, we're tied where they have a dising construction grounds, we've gone as far from theirs as we've-
Right.
Quick question, though, any others? Yeah, quick run through, you know, it's about a two-year build, is what those files don't require. We won one with Halifax County, does nineteen, we won four in the twenty-twenty Great Grant rounds, so we've had some new areas of the program and working with Bio, and so the goal would be after, as this project kind of finishes, those proposed, look for other opportunities, either be a grant or, or other, and all, any and all of them. But if, no further questions, that concludes our, our request and our presentation.
Any questions, Chris?
I'll just make a comment, you're, you're one of the fastest talkers that I have ever been able to understand.
Well, I'll, I'll tell my parents, they were worried.
Yes, sir, you're right, I've had people talk faster than I can hear, so-
Well, I can understand Chris very well.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
So just as a reminder, this board, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say my, I'm gonna say my part.
You don't have a bird to go.
All right. Yeah, we're gonna make up ground now, so just a reminder, this board has voted to approve providing funding from the NC Great Grant matching funds in the amount of not to exceed a million dollars for the county's American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for the provider that is selected by the state of North Carolina for the grant award, and we did this in our March twenty-first meeting and our April eighteenth meeting, so I think we have a motion ready to be made.
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My motion is to include AT&amp;T and Cloudwise as part of the board's previous action from March twenty-first and April eighteenth to approve providing the NC Great Grant matching funds in the amount not to exceed one million from the county's American Rescue Plan Act funds for the provider that is selected by the state of North Carolina for the grant award. I second.
We have a motion in a second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up, we have our planning activity report and a update on our comprehensive land use plan from Mr. Newton.
Yes, sir, so our land use plan, number one, I want to say thank you to each of you for participating in the second round of one-on-one conversations with our consultant regarding the recommended draft recommendations or a portion of the draft recommendations for the plan. That's extremely helpful.
I haven't met with her yet, but we're scheduled next Monday.
Yes, sir.
I missed my day.
I appreciate your, your willingness to do that, it's extremely helpful, and it, it gives us quite a bit of direction. So you may see some of those drafts based on those comments, and with the pending or impending steering committee next, or the impending steering committee next week, we, we may see those drafts, or those draft recommendations change even slightly between now and the time the full draft is submitted to you. I did mention, steering committee meeting will be meeting next week, it is May the eleventh at six P.M., and this will be at the Johnston County Ag Center and Auditorium, that will begin, once again, will begin at six, six P.M., we should wrap up within two to three hours. This will be the last meeting of the steering committee, so the focus will be those recommendations from the plan and any other items they'd like to see modified or prior to going to planning board and board of county commissioners for your review and, and any further comments. So we're hoping to have that, that completed and finished up here in the next few months, and we can move on to the next phase of this, this process.
That was at six o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Also, as requested, last meeting and, and between last meeting and this, we did provide for you a residential development map for the county, and it's actually multiple maps showing quadrants of the county. If you do see anything that needs to be modified or any additional information you would like to see on those maps, please let me know, we will make that happen for you. Johnston County is a large county, trying to get everything represented to a scale that's legible is, is somewhat difficult, but if you have any suggestions, it's to any additional information or information you don't need on the map, please let us know. We also provided for you the spreadsheet that gives you some data on each of those developments that have been approved, and this has been over the timeframe of twenty nineteen to present, so you can see the, the total number of lots that have been approved in the developments and their locations. With that, that's all I have for this evening for you, be glad to answer any questions you might have.
This, of course, does not include anything in ETJs, right?
No, sir, this does not include anything in the ETJs or in the municipal, or in the corporate limits of any of our eleven municipalities. But we can certainly grab that data for you as well, provided the municipalities manage that. If we do that, we would do that in a compilation of, of those communities by region, but if you would like that information-
You know, we spent a lot of discussion this morning about schools, and, and obviously, while we don't approve those, it will impact our school situation, so-
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Might not be a bad idea to look at that.